So then we're gonna spend money on a new flag.
Because they want.
Yeah, you can't even see it.
I guess that flag is.
Yeah, probably. Little, little ring on the corner.
Found something that relates to slavery or something they're saying?
Jesus Christ. Why don't we just get rid of that flag altogether? Right? True.
Exactly.
How can you not have infrastructure built up to city code? Uh, that one's, that one.
How do you think he's gonna vote on that?
He's, he's voting for us.
You what?
He's voting for us.
Good.
He's like, oh my fuck.
Right.
Like, what? It don't make no fucking sense.
It does, it makes some, it just doesn't.
No, 'cause if I were to buy a house, I wanna thank all the cities. It's not, I don't have a water shop? What?
Right.
Don't have a curb shop? You are kidding me? That's like, that's like in my house when we had to dig to find the sewer because it wasn't, it wasn't built up to city code and they never fucking. So our sewer main, we had no idea where it hooked up, so the city told us that we had to dig to find it. So we had to dig under the street, my neighbor's yard, and it ended up going under my neighbor's driveway and we had to, dude, it was on fucking.
Why should it be on you guys? Should be on the city.
Should be on the city.
Right.
But it wasn't.
I would've argued that. You were not a council at the time?
No, that was, and.
Half the reason why you wanted to be.
Mm-hmm, and tha- and that, our sewer collapsed in the winter, so we had to go three months without sewer because we couldn't afford to pay for them to heat the whole fucking street today. Yeah, and the kicker is they still charge us for water and sewer for those three months. And we clean and use it.
That's what I heard, well, sure.
See, so that type of thing could happen to an HOA because it's not.
Yeah.
I should've brought that up, but.
Was that Derek Miller?
Yeah.
He wasn't given a nickel off.
No, we came in here and we, I mean, that was a hardship. How do you go three months without sewer?
And then.
And then we had to pay for it, yeah.
Because the city was too, too freaking have their plans right and don't tell you where it was within a half, within an inch.
Yeah, they, they didn't need, they had no, they had nothing marked at all.
Of course, because it was put into all.
I mean, that, that could happen with the HOA too, because they don't have to, they don't have to do nothing.
All right, uh, you ready to go? Well, I suppose we're missing Mike, so maybe.
Yeah, let's go.
All right, we'll go ahead and call this, uh, meeting of the Sandy City Council Budget Work Session to Order. If we can all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, elimination under God, individual, delivery of the House of Stroll.
All right. During roll call, all council members are present. Do we have any public comment? Hearing none, uh, we'll move on to adopting the agenda.
Motion to adopt the agenda.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilman Merrill and a second from Councilman Lundin to adopt the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Moving on to F one, budget updates.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, so at the next meeting, uh, December fifth, we'll be, uh, considering the final budget and final levy for, uh, twenty twenty-four. Um, so this, this meeting is basically to give an update on where we're at from, uh, what we had previously approved in the preliminary. Um, at that time, we talked about, we wanna get that, uh, tax rate reduction down to eight point eight, so it matches up with the average increase in existing residential homes. Um, but since then, we've had some things come in, right? We've had, uh, we got our health insurance renewal. Um, we had, uh, um, some PD program and that was identified by council, um, dental insurance renewal, um, we've updated some, uh, you know, elections, uh, for, um, open enrollment, right? Some people will change their insurance coverage, uh, we've had some, some new people step in, right? And we had a couple people leave and new people come in. So we update where those, uh, names, those positions, what, uh, what step they're at. Um, and when it's all said and done, um, in aggregate, we did, we did well. Um, we, at the time, we approved the preliminary budget, I think if I remember it, we were hoping to hit eight point eight, uh, uh, reduction in the tax rate and have about a hundred and forty-seven, I think it was, maybe a hundred and forty-three, something like that. Uh, left over in the general fund that we would get applied toward fund balance. Um, and now as it sits, um, we're at about two hundred and two thousand. So, that's pretty good. That's, 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 I think that's a good outcome, especially for is, is, as much discussion we've had, as many things as we've considered. Um, I think, I think we, I think the end outcome is, is pretty good. Especially if I had said this is what the end outcome will be back in July. Like, you know, at that first meeting, I'm not sure, sure everybody would've believed me, right? So, so it's a good outcome. So, at this point, it's, if there are questions, comments, concerns, anything that we want to address, um, and the intent here is basically is, um, let's, let's address anything that we think needs to be addressed so that, uh, the meeting on the fifth, uh, can go smooth. And of course, I'll have the, the PowerPoint presentation, we'll go through the statutory requirements of the things that we need to discuss at that meeting and, uh, and give people an opportunity to weigh in on the budget and the levy at that time.
Thanks, Mike. Uh, so Jeff, I know you had a meeting with Mike today. I mean, I think maybe just to start off with, if you, if you wanna ask any questions or you wanna.
Uh, not, not right now. Uh, had a, what a three hour meeting and there's a lot of information.
Okay.
Um, but as you guys are talking, I can always chime in, uh, but yeah, nothing.
So, you know, and when we did the, the preliminary budget, I mean, of course, my whole goal at the time in trying to really push that, you know, to, to get to that level of that eight point, I think it was actually eight point nine seven percent or something like that, that we got the, the rate down. And that was to, to basically say, okay, well, the average home is going up eight point eight percent in value, we wanna try to offset that so that we can guarantee that they're not gonna pay more if that is true. So if they went up by that much, uh, cause all we can do, of course, is, is deal in averages, but, um, so Mike, i- the county's got all their preliminary stuff out now. I mean, is that still accurate that that eight point eight percent is, is the average or?
As, as far as I know.
Yeah.
Uh, i- and, and some of that is, you never quite know until the end, right? Um, so there's always an opportunity and generally there is always some kind of, um, there's, there's a parcel or somewhere contesting the valuation that's working through the system. Um, and periodically that'll happen. Um, not that long ago, we had had a revision on, uh, was center, was it Center Point Energy? Yeah, and, you know, and that was, you know, that affected two or three years of valuations. Those things happen. Um, but as far as we know, the best information we have currently, yeah, we're, we're on q- we're on, uh, on, uh, on par or on cue with our, with our goals.
So, pardon me, did that referendum that the school, did the school was asking for a referendum, were they not, in the last election? It was just school board members?
That was just school board, one.
Okay. Yeah. I was just curious, cause I, for some reason, I, somebody had said it was a referendum other than school board, but I didn't, I didn't get home until nine o'clock that night, so I.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I kinda focus on, on us and county and school.
Well, I know, but that, but the referendum, if that, if, if a referendum passes, that is gonna dram- dramatically change what our tax rate is.
referendum last year that I, that did pass.
Yeah, just like the one that, it came through when the previous superintendent left and the new one took over and they asked for, it was gonna be a hundred and twelve dollars a year on, and tax increase in your house. Uh, on the medium priced homing, homes, which mine, that's where it was at. Mine went up four hundred flipping dollars. So that hundred and twelve was not even close, so, cause that referendum passed. So that's why it's, it, it changes dramatically if the referendum passes.
There, I know my house, I looked at the tax statement today and my school portion had gone up, it's like a hundred and eighty dollars, so I don't think there was a referendum passed, but I know they're, they're trying to.
I think that when they passed that referendum, what was it, twenty-one?
Yeah, twenty twenty-one, I apologize. I said last year, but it was in twenty twenty-one.
That was the last.
Multi-year.
There was a multi-year increase, you know, gradually per year or whatever, yeah.
And I know that they're, they're trying to do kinda what we're doing and build their fund balance, um, so it's. I don't know, they're, yeah, so school, school stuff is gonna go up, um, but I, on, on my statement at least, uh, my city portion went up thirteen dollars and the county portion went up nine dollars, which that's next to nothing, so that's pretty.
So your value, your value of your house stayed at that, probably about that, about that eight percent?
Our, our value went up, no, our value of our house went up fourteen percent.
It did go up that much, okay.
Yep, so, I mean, I think we did a pretty dang good job still to just, I mean, a twenty different, or a nineteen dollar difference between the county and the city or whatever, it's, that's pretty good.
My, my, my house, we, since we just, you know, moved in or whatever, it's not, like, what I get isn't.
Next year you'll get hit.
But, so I mean, my mother-in-law's house on, on Nina there, sh- it was fourteen percent. The hers went up too, so, and I don't know about, about you guys, if you. But for, for hers, so the city portion on hers went, uh, and, but they, they, the homestead credit.
Went down.
Took that down, yes, so.
So this is, um, I did have one resident call, uh, the other day about this, and there is some confusion about that. Remember that the homestead, uh, exclusion, if I remember correctly, started about twenty thirteen, and how that works is it's a phased out thing, right? So if you have a home that's, um, very minimal value, right, so maybe you have a home that's a hundred thousand bucks, you were gonna qualify for the full exclusion. But by the time you get to about, it's about four hundred or four ten in valuation, this exclusion has disappeared entirely.
So as the value goes up, the exclusion.
The exclusion goes down.
Gotcha.
Yep, so.
They've been trying to phase out the homesteading, period.
Yeah, so that can kind of, you know, sort of like a double hit, right? Like you, you went up in value, but then more of it is taxable. So, so we did, the person I called, they actually did.
Yeah, cause I think.
Come right to that four hundred thousand, and so their exclusion, uh, was all of two hundred bucks. Like they didn't, you know, it didn't really help at all for them, so.
Cause I think on hers, my, my grant, uh, my, uh, in-laws, I think theirs went up like, I wanna say like seventy dollars for the city and fifty dollars for the county or something like that.
Their valuation must've gone up quite a bit then, on their house.
Well, it was, it was thirteen point nine percent, so. So that's why I was wondering, but your homestead, did yours go down at all though?
Yeah, it wa- like cut in half.
That much, huh?
Yeah.
Cause they only went down like fifteen hundred bucks, I think, uh.
Yeah, I, I don't remember the exact numbers, but it was like cut in half, cause I, that, that one was kinda like, I don't know what that one even is.
They're trying to phase out the whole homesteading, period.
Okay. I mean, I think, I think we're doing a pretty good job here.
No, I agree.
I'm happy with what, what, what I saw, I was like, well, we're pretty much dead on what we wanted, you know, and still building a fund balance for the rainy day fund because the economy is gonna crash and we are gonna have to subsidize taxes more in the next couple of years, I almost guarantee it. So, I, I'm pretty happy with what we did. Um, I don't know if there's any more fat to trim or if we, you know, just kinda slowly keep trimming the fat every year and be risk averse with our fund balance.
I think if, if we're gonna drop this, if we're, we, we said we're gonna drop it to eight point whatever, let's just leave it at that, let's not.
I would agree.
Cause if we do have a little extra money, that can still go into the general fund and just cushion that. I think giving that tax cut makes a big huge difference.
I agree.
I just don't think, I wanna, you know, trim off too much of your beard, Luke.
I, I agree, I'm right there with you.
You know, I mean, it's just, you know, that's just the way I see it, is you're given a, a heck of a tax cut. The county stepped in a little bit and did something decent there too, so.
Good job, county.
Well, and that's what I was just gonna bring up, was you guys realize you can't, are you gonna really let the county beat us? I mean, that's, that, that's, that's, uh, uh, I mean, it should be a fair concern, I think.
Well, that was just like that discussion when we talked about the intersection at Quiktrum. The same thing about the city taking over plowing, remember, we had that discussion about plowing that. Well, if that's the case, I wanna see some of that, that.
Agreed.
That tax dollar for the fuel costs that the county gets that we don't get to maintain their section of road.
Yeah.
So it, you know, they're getting funds, other funds.
Oh, I know that, I know that.
In our defense, we, they have a lot more fat to trim than we do as well, so we're, I mean, we're really getting lean, so it's.
Well, but I mean, we also got extra LGA money this year too, so we got some extra that helped us too, so, um, I mean, I guess I would like to keep pushing this a little bit. And I, and I think, uh, for those of you that have not been here on the last meeting of the year, you're gonna have people in the, in the crowd here that are gonna be, they'll, they'll make you, uh, change your mind if you haven't, uh, if you haven't figured out how to lower their taxes yet.
Those meetings are always great. I love coming those when I wasn't on council.
My favorite meeting of the year.
It's usually the one in March.
Um, but, so I mean, here, here's kinda what, I mean, we've got ninety-five thousand basically that you can see here in, in this memo that Mike sent out. That was extra, you know, that right now he's got applied to fund balance. And for us to get, so what the county did is they actually kept their levy at zero, and you and I had had lots of conversations and I, I thought you had told me that they, the rate was level. And I think you were under that impression at some point, right? And so was I, so I, but I, when I, Josie and I were talking the other day, and it turns out, no, that, she, she said, well, I think they left the levy the same actually, right? So, so I had to go back and look and she, she was right, so.
Yeah, I was told the rate was, one of the commissioners told me the rate stayed the same.
So their rate actually dropped more than ours did.
Right, I had, yeah, I noticed that on my tax statement, it's like, well, that can't be right, they had kept the levy at zero.
And levy isn't always the best way to look at it, cause if you grow, like Cambridge, they dropped their rate, I think five, or they're gonna drop it at least five point six percent or something, but their levy also went up eleven percent, which is, is great, you know, but. Um, but I just thought, you know, maybe if we can try to, cause I mean, we're, as far as fund balance versus the, the levy, I mean, we're, we're trying to be at that, you know, forty to seventy percent range. I mean, if we were shooting for fifty, I mean, um, I don't know, I mean, I think there's, there's a balance there, but right now, if we were to try, if the levy were to stay even compared to last year, we'd only have to cut another fifty, fifty, fifty-five-ish thousand or so to make the levy actually even. Or if we wanted to try to lower it so where we could actually say, well, in real dollars, you're paying less as a whole, we're actually taking less money this year. You know, now next year, the rate will, you know, still be a, a lower rate than it was this year overall, but the levy will go up next year, obviously, unless we find some other, you know, savings and stuff. But, so the levy isn't always the, the key, you know, measurements or anything like that, but, um, cause you're gonna grow and you're gonna have a bigger levy, but, but I just thought, I'd like to be a little more aggressive. I know, you know, you've got ninety-five thousand there, uh, George, well, go ahead.
To clarify one thing, on the memo, is remember that ninety-five thousand is the aggregate across all presented funds. That is not exclusive to the general fund.
Well, you're right, yeah.
So the, the, the amount addition of that ninety-five that is exclusive to the general fund would be roughly fifty.
Yeah, okay, cause you gotta sub from one forty, one forty-three to two oh.
Fifty-five, fifty-five, yeah.
Yeah.
Cause I think it was one forty-seven to two oh two, if I'm remembering right.
One forty-seven, I thought it was one forty-three, but.
Something like that.
Yeah, okay, so, so base, so, so yeah, you're right, yeah, cause it's not all saved from the general fund, you're right. So you're at, let's ca- let's just call it fifty-five there that we're adding, right now, we plan to add to the general fund. Um, and I agree with you too, that I think we should, should try to continue to build that fund, cause at some point, we may need to, to dip into it, right? So, um, so I'm all for saving for a rainy day as we do this, but, uh, George, you and I had had conversations about Tyler and Forth, and you've, you've talked about that too. I mean, Mike and I looked at, at today, I mean, if you were to push that back to twenty fifty, or you were to push that project back to, you know, twenty forty-three, I mean, you probably could take about fifteen thousand a year off of the levy by pushing it back. And you'd still would have time to either see savings that will help cover those things at that inflection point, or you'll have time to adjust if needed. So I mean, it, you know, and I think you as somebody that lives on that side of town and has, knows a lot of people in that area, I mean, I, I guess I would, you know, fifteen thousand a year isn't a ton necessarily. And if people do come and they say, well, hey, we want city sewer and water and we want our road finished, and, you know, you're, you're, if, if you're pushing it out to twenty forty-three, you're talking about twenty years down the road. I mean, are people gonna want that before then, or, you know, I don't know, I mean, I.
So I, I have a question on that for you quick, Josie, um, is it possible, so when we make these decisions to say, say we decide not to do that project or take it out of the capital improvement plan. I think we should get input from all the residents of that affected area before we make that decision. I mean, it's, it sounds great, but maybe there's seventy percent of the area that would like to ha- see that happen and only thirty percent that wouldn't. I don't think it's really fair for us to make, to pull that out without knowing what the residents of that area want. Is that something we can send out like a letter and sort of get feedback on?
So we could send out a survey to get feedback that is only as good as the people who are currently there who fill out the survey.
Yep.
Um, for a point in time. I think it would give a good snapshot of what the current residents would be desiring. Um, that would be, I mean, the other option is to do a public open house, uh, where they come in. I think in this instance, I think a survey would probably do the best if you give them a brief thing to fill out and an envelope to send it back to the city.
Yep, okay. See, I mean, I think that's.
I've been to open houses before and I, we had like two people show up.
Yeah, no, right.
Historically don't have a great attendance.
Jason was just pumped that we had two people show up.
Right, yeah, the, the county does those too, and it, yeah, it's usually not much, but surveys, I think, if we're going to do something like that, we need to get survey information and actual statistical information more than just our.
Well, and I don't know that, I mean, and I'm not necessarily pushing for that, I'm just saying, it's an option, it's there if we wanted to, to think about that, so. But, right now, we've got twenty-seven and twenty-eight is when we're planning to, to do that project, you know, I mean, or at least have the mon- the money available for it at that time.
Yeah, as it's, as it's listed, it's basically like president initiated, so we'd queue it up, it would be available, and then if the residents of Tyler and Forth have to say, yep, we wanna do this, we're prepared. Otherwise, the, the, the assumption that I have in the plan is, is that that would just keep getting pushed. Just one year at a time, just keep pushing it out, pushing it out, pushing it out, but that, if we do have a, you know, a majority or, you know, a significant number of residents come and say, yep, I want this project done, I need this done, and we're all on board with it, we're already prepared to, just go, yep.
Or you have the money sitting there and some other council decides they wanna blow it on.
Yeah.
Something else too.
Right. So George, do you know, do you know how many people are moving out of that area? I know I saw one estate sale there recently. Is, is there a lot of people moving out that the demographic might change?
It may, it may not, it's, it is a lot of older people.
Older, right.
Right. If it was me, I, I wouldn't want, I wouldn't want the road tarred.
Right.
Any infrastructure put in, because it's way cheaper to put in water or sewer than what it's gonna cost you in assessments and, uh, hookup fees and everything.
You mean, put in your own, put in your own water and sewer?
Then you're stuck having to pay fees to the city forever. That's me.
Yep.
So, I, I have a hard time believing, I mean, I, I can see why maybe a resident or two, if they were really in financial strait, you know, they, they didn't have the money, but, and they knew their sewer water was gonna fail, but they didn't have the twenty thousand to replace one or the other. Where they may wanna go on a payment plan, you know, and pay a thousand a year, whatever it's gonna end up being. Um, I'm not opposed to a survey. I, I was gonna knock some doors, um, I'll definitely be doing it next fall, um. I think putting it out twenty years is fine, but there's a possibility, there's, could be one or two people on that, that road that, that see things different.
Sure.
Um, right now, I, I don't know anybody that, that wants it done.
There's twenty-one houses, I think, in, on those two streets that would be assessed, right? So, and I think the assessed amount, you remember what that is off the top of your head at all? It's not that bad.
Yeah, it's twenty or twenty-five percent of the assessable costs, and it's, and not every, every component is an assessable cost, and then of course, there's the, you know, the caveat on the corner lots where it's, you know, half long, full short, and all that stuff, but.
Is that standard as if it was any neighborhood?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, and, and here's been my argument about that, those two neighborhoods. You could look on that map and take those two parcels of those two streets and overlay them anywhere within the city. And you would have a hundred people paying for that same assessment of twenty-five percent. So these people are all getting way overburdened on what they should have to pay for the size of their lots. Um, and that was one of the things I was against, uh, a lot during the, um, annexation was the unfairness of it in the future. Of future costs, and I've always thought that the city should step up and pay way more than twenty-five percent, especially since what they did. Or come up with some kinda compromise for these properties, cause it's, I just see it, it's, it's unfair.
Yeah, I mean, that, that whole project on Sixth Avenue and Nina and Marion, uh, you know, on the, you know, kind of all those four streets on the, the, uh, west side of Sixth. That was like eighty houses, I think, split that, and it was like fifteen hundred dollars, sixteen hundred dollars a house or something, you know, something there about. So, yeah, I mean, it's substantially more than those houses would be to, to do this to those twenty-one.
And they're getting double whacked, because all those are short leads, like from here to the door, from here to the offices, where they're doing triple that. Some of them have such long leads, they have to have jet pumps put in to get the sewer up to the main, um, and which is an extra expense, and I don't even know who pays that, I'm pretty sure it's the homeowner.
Yeah.
Um, so the whole deal is just, it, it, it wasn't good from the get-go.
I, I agree, I mean, maybe, with that perspective, maybe it would just be better for us to just take it off of there. I mean, because the city always says that.
I think we should leave it on there, cause at some point, somebody's gonna want it, and it's, you know, they're paying taxes, and they should have some ex- expectation that it's, at some point, we're gonna offer them city services, and, I mean, I. But yeah, I mean, that was, that was why I, I didn't wanna just let it go away completely as far as the topic of conversation for us tonight was.
I think the whole point though is those type of houses and the reason they bought them was not to have city services. They, they bought them for a whole different reason than to try to conform to city rules and regulations and, you know, they wanted a little piece of land and do their thing. You know, they all are two, three, four acres. The fairest way to do this i- is, if we were gonna be fair, is to really have, talk to all the landowners and actually make them answer some questions.
And here's what we, we could do too, is we could say, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna just, for our purposes, we'll make a plan and say, oh, twenty forty-three is what we're doing, and we're gonna take the fifteen thousand a year off. Well, we have plenty of time to make an adjustment, so if we wanna say even for this budget cycle, that here's what we're, we're tentatively thinking, we're gonna plan for this. But, you know, in January here, or whenever we have time to get around to it, let's send a survey out to these residents and just ask them, you know, here's what we're thinking, or, you know, we, however we wanna word it, but, and just see what they think. But, but we, we have time to make, it's, you know, it just, just for the sake of putting it where it belongs at this point, I mean, it, we could make a decision on it like this and then still go out and, and ask, and we could change it next year too.
Sure.
So, cause it's not like we wouldn't have time to, to adjust, but.
I think we got a couple of years to be able to deal with this and then move it out. I know you'd like to, what's your goal, to try to move that budget item out?
Well, I just wanted to just keep thinking about it, I mean, it's, if they don't want it, or we don't think they're gonna want that stuff, then, you know, if we can see, and, cause I mean, that would be a concern to me, is it, if, I understand what Mike's saying, is you have the money there and you just keep pushing the project back. But, at the same time, it's sitting there where it's not in the residents' hands, it's in our hands or in other councils' hands. Well, I'd trust the resident to hold on to that money more than I would trust the council to hold on to it, you know what I mean? So that was part of the thought process there too, but, um, I mean, we, and we don't have to decide anything tonight, I mean, we can talk about all this on, on the fifth, but it's probably better for Mike if we, if we give you a direction at least a little bit now.
Yeah, I, on, on this project, or these two projects? I, my biggest thing is, um, the right expectations, that the residents down there understand what, it clearly understand what the intent is. Whether it's queue it up for twenty twenty-seven or wait it till twenty fifty-three, you know, make sure they actually know and that there, there's some buy-in. That's the biggest thing.
Sure.
And direction, council, direction tonight would be ideal, because going into the December fifth meeting should be all the budget documents and, um, resolutions that Mike will be bringing forward to the council to certify our tax rate and the final levy on that December fifth meeting. It's not ideal to make changes at the meeting, they, it can happen, but ideally is to have the direction today, so he can be prepared with the final on the fifth.
I don't know if there's been a meeting, uh, that last meeting that we haven't made changes since I've been on council.
Well, we.
Cause that's always when I bring it up, cause the, all the people are in here and there, putting all the, all the heat on everybody that doesn't wanna lower taxes and.
I don't think there's anybody here that doesn't want to, that, which is.
No, I, I.
A lot more, uh, fiscally responsible now than in the past.
Yeah, but that was always the day to do it, was to wait till you had the crowd in the room.
Yeah. I, I think we, I mean, we, we met our goal of keeping it, you know, the money that people pay out of their pockets relatively the same as last year, and I think that was a good goal, and we're still setting ourselves up for economic downfall, which is, is gonna happen. Um, I mean, I, I like the idea of pushing that out, and maybe we could save some money there. Um, but otherwise, I don't know that there's really much else that we can trim off and be risk averse. You know, I don't, I don't wanna, I don't wanna pull, I mean, I would like to put the money in the reserve fund, I know it sounds like a politician thing to say, but I think in the next year, two years or three years, people are actually gonna need the tax, the tax savings. This year, I think people are still okay, but I think what's gonna happen, I mean, you're seeing mortgage rates, interest rates go up on everything, there's a lot of people that sign up for loans and mortgages and don't realize how much money that actually costs. So now you're, you're gonna see, I mean, it, it's an economic downfall, like collapse is what's coming. Um, so I think if we save for the rainy day fund, it's actually better for our residents to maybe be able to cut taxes more in the coming years versus this year. We met our goals this year. Um, there's, I mean, there's maybe still a little bit of fat to trim, but I don't think we should get too aggressive with it personally.
Yeah, and I mean, I don't know, I mean, with the hundred and, I, I thought it was a hundred and forty-three, you might be right, it's a hundred and forty-seven, but.
I I, my recollection was either one forty-three or one forty-seven, so what.
I mean, how does that compare to years previous to this, as far as fund balance contribution and?
I think in twenty twenty, it was either twenty twenty-two or twenty twenty-one, we actually had in the end a contribution of that, like when I actually would take out revenues, expenditures, it was a very, a number very similar. That ends up being the default way that most cities contribute to fund balance is, they put together a balanced budget, recognizing that the revenues are conservative, so lower than they actually think they will be, and then they you do the the opposite with expenses. And at the end of the year, you're hoping that your revenues were higher than you budgeted, your expenses are lower than you budgeted, and the difference is gonna be what you have default contributed to fund balance, that would be the stand, that would be how most would do it. A lot of cities also don't put much effort into fund balance. They don't spend much time talking about rainy day funds, they don't talk about planning for tax relief during an economic downturn, that, those are common discussions, to be quite frank.
So, I mean, I just, I, what I'm trying to say is, I think a hundred and forty-three thousand going into fund balance is already a pretty generous contribution, especially when you're factoring in that there's a good chance that our expenses might be lower and our our income might be higher, and you're still gonna be able to put that towards fund balance besides, so. So that's, that would be my argument for saying, okay, well, let's take that extra fifty, you know, fifty-five thousand or so that we're talking about out of these savings that we saw and realized, and if we move that capital improvement uh back on Tyler and Fourth, to save fifteen thousand there. And then, the other one that, well, I have two other ones that I was was contemplating, was the, well, the park dedication dollars, you know, that's something I think we we probably are gonna want to talk about on the fifth, that, you know, we don't probably have all the info today to to really discuss that, because we may see that, okay, well, there's, you know, things that are ten years, you know, if we just look at the ten years down the road now, things that we could use park dedication dollars for that we didn't know we could.
Mm-hmm.
And if we, you know, apply that to those things, then what could that save us today? Because we're not having to save that money to pay for those things now over the next ten years or whatever it is. It's, you know, it's, the park dedication fund's the only issue with them as far as budgeting goes, is to to know what you're gonna receive, now that makes it kind of tough, but if you know what you have now and you know what you can use to cover the expenses with that money you have currently, well, that we can predict, you know, with a hundred percent accuracy, so. So that would be another area there, I think we could probably see some savings, you know, year over year for for an extended period of time would be those park dedication dollars. And I think, you know, like I mentioned earlier, I'd like to, if you could, maybe bring on the fifth, or maybe we can talk about it, you know, or maybe you guys could send out a memo or something like that, you know, prior to that time, so we can kind of at least be aware of it. But, you know, highlighting kind of what what funds we could attribute to the park money or, um, speaking gibberish here now, but you know what I mean.
Staff will have that available next week for the park meeting, um, and we can send it out to all council meetings, so they're aware of what's going out with that item.
Yeah, because I think that that could be, if, I mean, when we were looking at it today, I want to say we were thought, maybe like one point three million is, was that right?
I mean, that's the, that's the rough.
That wasn't like, yeah, that wasn't us going into detail, that was just kind of grabbing a section.
Rough ballpark, the top section of those PRC ones, just twenty years worth.
Yeah, right, so we don't, we don't know that that's a hundred percent, but I mean, that it, you know, we have six hundred and some thousand right now, and if we, that's if we don't use it for a splash pad, you know, well, that's, that could offset that one point three million in a hurry, and then that's that much less that you have to pay for it, yeah.
Lowering tax rate.
So, so that, I think, would be maybe one thing that could potentially change and would probably have to wait till the fifth to really discuss, but.
I think for, I I like where we're at now, but I think during the next meeting, we have the residents in, I think we need to hear what residents want us to not spend money on. I think, right now, we're at a pretty, pretty good spot, I mean, even if we don't end up changing, but if we get people in on December fifth that are adamant about, we shouldn't spend the money on this, you know, I I think that could kind of give us our final information we need, even though Mike wants the information now to sort of go forward, but.
And I, I don't want to bump that Tyler Street or the Fifth Avenue up right now. I'd rather take care of the problem or at least have a plan for it, instead of bumping it up twenty, thirty years or, I mean, if we bump it up, I'd like to leave that money in the kitty and still pay it, so in the future, they didn't have to pay as much in assessments, or we should have a better conversation about those two ave- those two streets before we make a decision on it or bump it up.
That's fair. Um, okay, so the last thing that I had, and that's something that, you know, we probably will end up talking about on on December fifth or whatever, but um the seasonal employees for Public Works. So, one thing we talked about today that, you know, we we haven't really mentioned before, but as far as, well, and I don't know, I guess we'd, fencing and stuff like that really would kind of still be a pretty big expense, but although maybe park dedication could cover that. Probably not, huh? No. Um, so, you know, if you, instead of having a employee sitting there at the compost site, maybe what if we had
A gate.
A gate, and we had either a code for the gate, where they had to come to the city and get a, get the code, or we had, um, you know, a kiosk out there, and I guess Elk River, I think, you said maybe had that, or Anoka, or something like that, um, where people would, you know, put their ID in or something, I mean, just something to where we're not having someone having to just sit there and.
I've, yeah, I've thought about that a lot, I use the compost site a lot, I see people there all the time, and I went, I went on Sunday and dropped off a load, and the seasonal worker said she's never seen it that busy, so I think it's great that we open it up for the, that weekend, but, you know, I've been thinking about that, and I thought of a fence system or a code reader, but then you still have the problem of people might still bring waste and they hide, you know? And you're not, I mean, you're a little more accountable, because your ID's scanned, but at the same time, how do we prove that they dumped something? We'd have to put a camera out there, and then you'd have to go after them, and that's the hardest part, yeah.
That was one of the biggest reasons I went to the gate, and because people were dumping off furniture, mattresses.
Yeah.
Now you're putting undue cost, because mattresses are a bitch to get rid of. And all of a sudden, a refrigerator shows up, and an appliance shows up.
Yep.
And somebody goes in there and they do it in the middle of the night, and even if you had a camera and resolutions poor, you don't know who it is.
Yeah, I think it, I I've thought about that extensively, because I hate it.
I, I, that's just a problem, it's gonna cost the city more money in the long run if you don't.
I hate when I go up there and I see people sitting there, I can't pay to sit.
I prefer to see, I prefer, I prefer to see them be there more days than they are, because it's not always.
Convenient, right.
Convenient days.
Well, that's the thing that that would allow you, is a little bit more flexibility on their hours and stuff.
I see, to me, Saturdays and Sundays are a huge day.
Agreed.
They're better than they were, but that was, that was, that's, that was actually probably why why I got your vote when when I was getting appointed, was because I said my mother-in-law wants to see the the compost hours improve. Steve ate that up, so.
But, but it's, but it, I mean, that's, that's the whole thing, is Saturdays and Sundays is when people are at home trying to take care of their lawns and cleaning up or whatever, that's, but that's just my personal preference, that doesn't make it right or wrong.
I always thought it was weird, too, that they're open during the week, you know, it's, and not on the weekend, I I, so I always collect them, I leave Saturday or Sunday, and then it's like, well, now I gotta wait until Tuesday, that's kind of, it seems kind of weird, but do we have to pay more on the weekends, I assume, or?
No.
Oh.
It's just availability of staffing.
Okay, I mean, I guess I'd rather see it open just on Saturday and Sunday, really, I mean, we could cut some costs there, because now it's open, what, four days? Is it Tuesdays?
I don't think you'd want to cut any hours, I think it gets used, I think, pretty consistently, doesn't it?
Well, I mean, if you're just trying to lower the cost of somebody sitting there, I think that might be the easiest way, and still be able to control what gets in, that's.
I don't know, I mean, I just, I just, just the seasonals in general, that was a savings of like forty-three thousand if we, and we we had talked about taking that out before, and then we ended up putting it back in on the preliminary budget, and I just, I mean, the more I've thought about it since then, too, I mean, you look at the seasonals, they're working on illuminated sany, and they're working on, you know, filling in for follow drivers when we've got people on work comp. I mean, there is, I I don't know, I mean, my argument at the time was, well, we've got our our Public Works guys are going out, and they're putting in, you know, twenty water meters a day, and they're making time for that, you know, I mean, some other stuff probably gets pushed off, and maybe they don't get to it as soon as they would like to, but it is at the end of the world, and I, that's still, I think, a valid argument. But anyway, I just wanted to bring it up for discussion and see what you guys thought about it, and um, those were kind of the four, the four things that I was thinking about, was the the uh moving that extra money from, instead of contributing it to the fund balance, would be to move it toward lowering the levy, uh, so that we can get to either, you know, a slightly decreased levy or maybe an even levy. And then, uh, the park dedication funds, I think, are huge, and then Fourth and Tyler and and then the seasonals, so. But, yeah, I don't know. Jeff, what do you think now?
Well, everybody would, like, their taxes go cheaper. Um, I'd like to get a little more information on each of those projects. I guess I didn't know about the uh, the one project, Tyler and.
Tyler and Fourth.
Yeah, I need more information on that, I would, uh.
It's hard to know all this stuff, it takes, it takes a little while to get into it, so, yeah.
I could see uh going away with some of the seasonal money, but uh, I guess food for thought at this point.
The one thing that's nice about seasonals is that they they make less, and they can kind of fill in than our normal public works. I mean, I I get your perspective, though, too, like, if you had time to switch out twenty meters a day, what are you doing now? But at the same time, yeah.
I don't even know what my perspective is anymore, I just, that's why, that's why I wanted you guys to tell me what it was.
I'll tell you what I think of Fourth and Tyler.
Yeah.
I was been a dead set against that whole annexation project from day one, and those poor people were annexed in. You know, I've been, I've been a advocate for everybody, trying to help all all the ones that were annexed in. There was a few properties that I strongly agree should have been annexed, but the outline skirts shouldn't have been. You know, it was the donut hole ones that were crapped on, I mean, they're the ones that should have been annexed.
Mm-hmm.
But anything else was.
Too far.
It was, it was overdone, you know, because that was brought up when that, when that uh event center was brought in. And you can go back to those meeting minutes, and I said, wait a minute, they want to be annexed, I I get that, I'm perfectly fine with that, but what are you gonna do with the properties between here and there? Well, we won't annex them in only unless they want to, well, guess what? They weren't, they didn't want to, and they still got annexed. And that's why I was always dead set against that. So, the Fourth Street, but I I do agree with George, I like to see it there to help, so when it does have to happen, there's funds in that to help offset that cost to those people. I mean, that's fine, I'm fine with you, if if you think that fifty-five thousand, but I'm, hey, I'm the rainy day guy, I'm gonna always be that rainy day guy. If you feel that's what you gotta do to get this thing through and done with, fine, I'm dead set against the seasonals being cut, they save a lot.
I I would agree.
I've always happened, I've always been that dead set on that seasonals. The reason that our Public Works could do those meters was because of the seasonals. And it wasn't just going out mowing grass, it was doing other things that had to be addressed. So, the seasonals is huge, it saves us a lot of money in the long run, and I don't care what it's from.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's projects like in the Archer Range or the Sledding Hill or, you know, things that you maybe wouldn't end up doing in-house that you are able to do because you have those guys, too, so.
Yeah, so the seasonal is huge, but that fifty-five thousand, I I'd just as soon leave it in the fund, put it back in the in the in the general fund or the rainy day fund, as you want to call it, but if you feel that's what it's gotta do to get this thing budgeted done and passed, I'm fine with that, but I still am pretty solid, I want to keep those seasonals, and I I think I'd agree with Mr. Heman on that. I think that my other fifteen thousand or whatever's gotta stay in there, so when that does, time does have to happen or come, it helps offset those costs. Those people, yeah, everybody was, everybody that was annexed in got railroaded, I don't care, even if you were a donut hole, because you weren't ever in that position, but it's, you know, the donut holes definitely probably should have been looked at, but the way that whole thing went down, you know, it got pushed through, when I asked to have it uh postponed till I got back from vacation? Nope, had to be done now, because it it was known that I was gonna argue it.
Those are bad times for the city residents.
Yeah, there's faults out there.
Yeah, that's all I needed, he didn't need anybody to stir it. So, I I've always been dead set against the annexation, I don't, I forced annexation, and I will always stand up, I don't don't want to be that guy to provoke intimate domain either, because that's just, to me, that's just wrong, too. So, that's just where I stand on it, and I think keep the seasonal workers, I I I think that's a energy that, you know, two of those guys are less than one full-time employee.
Well, that's, yeah, that's kind of where I was, that's where I was leaning to, and I just, like I said, I just wanted to bring it up, because it was something we had talked about, and I just, I mean, you you look at that, hours that they're covering, and, you know, would you need to hire a full, another full-time guy then to replace the seasonals in in some ways, you know, too, so I just, so that one, I think, it sounds like we don't really have a lot of interest for that.
It would actually cost us more if we hired someone full-time, because you have benefits and, and their union wage, yeah, that's.
Essentially, well, right, yeah, right. Yeah, so.
I I mean, I would, I would rather see more seasonals and le- and less actual full-time, but that's a hard, that's a hard way to go, too, so.
And I'm hearing more consensus on probably, for right now, leave Tyler and Fourth where it's at, maybe send a survey out.
Yep.
But for right now, let's just play it on the safe side and have the money available to us if we need it for that project, is more what I think I'm hearing, right?
Well, for now, until we have further discussion, yes.
Okay. And then, uh, park dedication money, we're gonna want to take a look at that probably a little closer on the fifth.
That's gonna be a big one.
I think that could be huge, yeah.
That, yeah.
Yeah, that could be a real game changer there, so. And that, you know, then you may not even have to talk about that fifty-five.
The, yeah.
Um, but but so I think those are maybe the two that we probably will need to chew on a little bit, is, you know, should we? So, I mean, where, if we're at total right now, Mike, do you know, I mean, as far as percentage-wise, where we'd be setting it with fund balance for? If we were to add to the, just the one forty-three instead of the fifty-five, or instead of the two, two oh two or whatever it is?
Uh, we were at forty-one percent, rough math, two hundred thousand would give us an additional four. Uh, but that doesn't account for the outcome of twenty twenty-three, which we won't, I don't, I couldn't tell you exactly how that is, right?
At the end of this year, we could have additional money that would go in there.
And we, that's one of those deals, you'd never find out about it until you're just about ready to start the next budget cycle, so.
Probably floating in that forty-six to forty-eight percent, maybe somewhere.
I think that's probably a a reasonable, reasonable estimate, guess, is where we might end up. But now, of course, we'd, remember, that's even when we get to April, or or first meeting in May, and go over the audit findings, it's not gonna say that, because this math is now already including this budget, so.
That would be, that would be if you put the two hundred and not the one forty-three, yeah. So, I mean, either way, we're not, the fifty-five is not gonna be the, a big change, I guess, one way or another, as far as the fund balance goes, but, but.
Yeah, I think you, I think you guys are are correct on picking up that the park dedication stuff would matter, and it will matter what, which ones you pick, and in what years they're in. My suspicion is, is that because of the way we went about the process, and having originally removed twenty-two, twenty twenty-four expenditures in Fund nine twenty, and then put some back, you know, the park dedication stuff isn't necessarily gonna change anything for twenty twenty-four, right? So, if if we want to say is, um, you know, that we want the levy to be even, then I think you probably do need to hit that fifty-five thousand, right? And then understand that any any identified expenditures that would use park dedication fees through, that are already listed in Fund nine twenty, you know, that would be something that we're now queuing up and understanding for twenty twenty-five, six, seven, whatever years those are in, because that's also gonna be another one of those things where it's like, yeah, I really want to spend that on this sixty thousand, because I don't want to spend that sixty grand, but at the same time, that might not be scheduled for twenty thirty-one, and I don't necessarily want to spend the money early, I want to get my full useful life out of something that's already been paid for. So some of that, it it, we may be compelled to just be patient, but we, I mean, we're gonna have to go through and figure out which which of those expenditures we want to start marking off as used, uh, you know, to be used for park dedication fees. So, I think there's some math and some some work on that. I think at this point, it's like, if, yeah, if we if we want to get an even levy, we should just take fifty-five, go back to our one forty-three or whatever, right? Just take the fifty-five, get to zero, and then understand that the park dedication stuff is gonna be some measure of planning and agreement.
Because my, in my mind, I was thinking, okay, well, if we're not, if we're gonna say, be able to spend that money on those items, then that's less that we would have to tax in order to save for those items now. But that's, and I understand what you're saying, it's, because we already did move some of those back a year, so we're not gonna realize that savings like right now, but.
Yeah, I guess, I guess what I'm trying to say is, there's just, like, the amount of time we have to do this, right? At this point in the year, it's like, I mean, if if we think we can get through, and if they say, all right, this is the list, this is the years these things are going in, we can do the math and recalibrate that levy, great, um, but we're, we're getting down there, I mean, so.
Have you, have you said in the pa- I think you said in the past you would like to see the fund bounce between. Have you have you said in the past, I think you said in the past, you would like to see the fund balance between, was it fifty and seventy is?
The the fund balance policy that we have now um is one that I wrote. And it the uh the target is to float between thirty and seventy. Um, and the idea is is that in your good years, you build it up and if you have a, you know, a another great recession. That's when you need the the idea is is to get up to seventy. If I get up to seventy, I can get through a great recession. Right? I can I can subsidize taxes for two or even three budget cycles and still have something. It might be pretty minimal. But I can still have something left in fund balance.
So what you said that's along that line, seventy percent is probably your ultimate goal?
That's the high mark and then if we get started getting close to that, I mean, I would start talking to you about how to ratchet things down by the time we got to like sixty-two. Because again, we only find out about after the fact, so if I'm not talking to you eighteen months ahead of time. You'd zoom right past it and before you even knew it, so we we would start talking about the time we got to sixty sixty-two, we'd already be talking about how do we ratchets this back? And and make sure that we're not inadvertently putting too much to fund balance at that point, but we are not to that point yet.
Just prior prior to this fund balance policy that you wrote that we adopted in twenty nineteen, I think it was. That it was it had to be at fifty percent or right?
It was just the the basic language of it was fifty percent. And if you aren't at fifty percent, you are required to get there immediately. And if you are over fifty percent, you are required to reduce taxes immediately. There was no. You know, it it kinda built in a lot of variability and didn't necessarily give you as much planning options.
At that at that time, and I I'm asking you to remember back, but at that time, it was it was one mayor leaving and one mayor coming in. And the mayor that was leaving decided that we were gonna lower the tax rate nineteen percent, eighteen eighteen percent, something like that. Well, it wasn't even to get votes. It was just because he was on his way out.
It was it was a fair amount, yes.
And so how he he would have had to drain the fund balance, how much to accomplish that?
We didn't have to drain fund balance on that because I had a good estimation on back of the napkin increase in market value. So but we did, we did drain the fund balance considerably in the hotel project. So is it immediately before that, it was.
Cause we were, when I first got on council, we were at like thirty something maybe.
That was the result of the the um large cash payment.
Hotel was actually the cause of that. It was not.
Cause we basically borrowed cash from water sewer and then the general fund, it was obligated to pay that back. And once you put it, you know, basically eight hundred fifty thousand on the books, yeah, that's a giant hole to fill. So and we've done a lot. We've gotten through that part and we're back on track, um, but yeah, we're, you know, still in the still in the forties.
Dollar amount wise, I mean, we're saying we're at forty-six, forty-eight percent for so what is that? What is that?
Remember, this is only it's only a percentage against your next year's expenditures, you know, I'm assuming off the top of my head, I'm assuming that we're, you know, about four, a little more than four million on. This general fund expenditure, so. You know, four hundred thousand is ten percent.
I would I would like to see us build it now as much as we can because I think the economy's gonna tank. I mean, if he said he wanna be during a great recession type period, he'd like to have it at more at seventy percent. I mean, I think we're gonna be there and we're at forty-six percent.
Yeah, and I'm not saying we shouldn't, but I mean, we're all I'm saying is we're already planning to give a hundred and forty-three thousand this year.
But is that enough?
Do you how much of your taxpayer dollars do you want just sitting in an account for a rainy day too, when, you know, it'd be nice for them to have it now too, so. That's that's the balance has gotta be there, but but I'm just saying we have an awful lot of money already sitting there. That that would be my only argument is that I'd like to see us push more for lower taxes now and and that's always my argument. But but I mean, we're already, like I said, we're we're building that fund balance with what we've already been able to to move around and to save and and we're still. Already planning to put the one forty-three there, but anyway, we'll we we can chew on that topic a little bit more and I think the. The part dedication money may may change that a little bit too on how we we see that on the fifth, but. Any other real quick stuff? Otherwise, we gotta wrap it up and start council, so.
I think we're happy with the direction we're going, basically. Mike, that's the sum up, I think.
You know, I'll basically come prepared with what we currently have and, you know, we'll we'll just have to stay in touch on the. You know, the park dedication stuff. We'll see how this next coming meeting turns out on that and, you know, and I'll just try to be prepared and flexible on on the fifth and. Um, the only thing would be keep in mind is the more changes that we make the day of, enhanced risk for an error, but that's. Other than that, yeah, we can change things.
All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second, I have a motion to adjourn from Councilman Lundin and a second from Councilman Heman. All in favor say aye. All opposed, same side. Motion carries five zero. We are adjourned.